I call to order this regular meeting of the City Commission this February 24th, 2020. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, has a role been taken?
It has, all are present tonight.
Great. First on our agenda, we have a departmental presentation by our Parks and Public Spaces Director, Chris Bundy. Welcome, Chris.
Thank you. Thanks for inviting me to talk about parks tonight. So I'm gonna talk to you about the Parks and Public Spaces Department. And just to give you an overview, let's give you a history of when and how the Parks Department was formed, some staffing, a brief look at the Parks Department staff, some details about our park, our city parks, cemetery and how they're maintained, programs, some of our services, partnerships and program support the Parks Department provides to the community, and planning, what goes into planning, maintenance projects and park enhancement projects. And putting it all together at the end for you. First of all, our first park ordinance was approved in 1958. The Mount Pleasant City Commission first approved the Parks Ordinance on that, in that year, and the Parks and Recreation is authorized under Michigan enabling legislation of 1917, and it's a Public Act 165. And it's an act authorizing cities, villages, counties, townships and school districts to operate systems of public recreation and playgrounds. In 1971, the Parks Department was first established by action of the City Commission. And the City Commission receives input and recommendations concerning park and recreation activities from the Parks and Recreation Commission. Mount Pleasant Parks, it's a citizens advisory board that's appointed by the City Commission and serves three-year terms, and the terms are staggered, obviously we don't want everyone leaving at one time. The Parks Department team, we have five full-time members in the Parks Department, and our, three of our staff members are brand-new with parks, though it's challenging, we're working to get them all up to speed on, in our busiest season coming up. Two of them are at the Great Lakes Parks Training Institute this week for a variety of parks training. Two of them have already completed their training to receive their commercial driver's licenses because we operate heavy equipment such as backhoes and dump trucks for park repairs and maintenance, as well as a variety of snow removal equipment. We will also be attending, they'll also be attending the Certified Playground Safety Inspection Training in Novi in April. And they'll also have, we do maintain 12 separate playground areas, and our training schedule also includes chainsaw safety, certified chemical applicator licensing, and FEMA emergency management training. Our office professional supports both the Parks and Recreation Departments and manages items as our, such as our shelter rental program, dog park memberships, as well as fielding parks-related questions and preparing documents and contracts, to name a few. She's also the front desk of City Hall here, so you probably have all walked past her here and there. Our seasonal staff consists of high school juniors and seniors, college students, teachers off for the summer, retirees, and they are kept a key in keeping our parks and cemeteries in downtown mode and trimmed, our shelters and restrooms clean, our trash removed, and parks watering, hanging baskets, fishing wayward picnic tables out of the river, cleaning off graffiti. And as you can see in this photo, building or putting up signs and building playgrounds is also another element that they do. First time, a lot of times this is the first time in the work world for our seasonal employees, and they're very valuable to us because we spend a lot of time training them, and a lot of them have gone on to do great things in the future for our staff alumni. So our intern, when we can get one, helps with day-to-day operations and special projects in the parks, which I will talk a little about later. Our volunteers and community service workers also help to keep the parks in good shape. Facilities and equipment, parks and cemetery, give you a little overview of that. I could talk for an hour on our city parks and the benefits of getting outside, but I have 10 minutes or less, so I'll try and hit the highlights here. We're fortunate to have the Chippewa River flow through the city because it creates great nature enjoyment opportunities for residents and visitors, coupled with the Riverwalk Trail, five major parks along the Chippewa River inside the city, so we're very fortunate with that. The city of Mount Pleasant has a total of 12 parks comprising nearly 400 acres, varying in size from one acre, neighborhood parks to 90 acres of natural area right in the middle of the city. We have very active, and we have, we have very active and heavily-used facilities such as Island Park, Pickens Field, and our only east side park, Horizon Park. Two very natural areas with passive recreation opportunities such as Milpon Park, Chipwaters, and Indian Pines are only park facility that is located outside the city limits. The GKB Riverwalk Trail system along with many foot trails comprises about five and a half acres, or five and a half miles of walking, hiking, biking trails to be used year-round. The Parks Department also manages 37, the 37-acre Riverside Cemetery with a treasure trove of local history, lots of mowing and trimming and to be done, and your occasional Pokemon Go participants looking for clues along the gravel roads there. We have lots of amenities located in the parks, including sled hill, dog park, spray park, skate park, arts pavilion, ball fields, soccer fields, tennis and pickleball courts, shuffleboard, horseshoes, sand volleyball, and many playgrounds and picnic shelters to enjoy. We also work with our veterans to maintain our war memorials in various parks and public spaces in the city. Public spaces, the Parks Department maintains other public areas in addition to the parks and the cemetery. We also provide maintenance for the downtown areas, including mowing and trimming around parking lots, cleaning parking areas, maintaining flower beds, and those types of things, as well as the maintaining public safety and City Hall exteriors. Contract support, we also, the Parks Department is also responsible for managing the maintenance and contract for Mission Street, the Mission Street Corridor, including entry walls, irrigation, turf-to-areas along the corridor. Maintenance and operation, the Nelson Park Maintenance Shop is the heartbeat of the Parks and Public Spaces operation and houses field staff and most of our maintenance equipment, which is rotated seasonally. I already talked about our facilities and amenities, which the public uses for recreation enjoyment, and the Parks Department maintain, maintains, but now I want to mention the most-used maintenance-intensive items in the parks. Can you guess what those are? We call these support facilities, they include restrooms, trash receptacles, dumpsters, parking lots, and believe it or not, turf and grass areas. These areas are the most-used part of the park system, and maintenance of these areas take most of our staff's time and energy, and we usually hear about it fast when they're not up to par. You can have the best Timbertown playground on the planet, the greatest farmer's market, an awesome spray park, fantastic ball diamonds for your tournaments, but if a family uses your restroom and it's scary, it's likely they won't return, or worse, they'll probably tell their neighbor about their experience, too. One of the first things we teach our full-time seasonal employees is a term we call standard of care, and we do our best to teach our staff, we have a high one. The same goes for the trash cans in the park, or the maintenance of the turf kids play ball on, or our families run and throw frisbees around on. It's all important and critical for everyone's enjoyment and safety, and it's a reflection on our community. Use lots of equipment, tools, supplies to clean the 10 public restroom facilities in our parks. We have lots of fuel when we mow all the turf in the parks, then we get to start all over again. That's not a complaint, it's just what it takes to meet the standard of care to maintain both the recreation facilities and support facilities in our parks and public spaces. We also have services-
Chris, just so you know, you're at 10 minutes, so you may want to-
Move quicker. Services and support partnerships, we work with the Recreation Department to support their programs in the, in the parks, like they do farmer's market and soccer program and so forth, and we do lining the fields and those types of things. Community program partnerships, we support Little League, we do field lining with them and so forth. And then we also have Parks and Cemetery Services, which include shelter rentals and help folks find cemetery plots and sell cemetery plots. The Parks and Master Plan, capital planning, a lot of the funding that we use for parks, we get from grants, city funds, donations and partnerships that we put together. Our park upkeep projects include things such as putting new roofs on shelters, those types of projects. Our park enhancement projects includes things like you see here with the amphitheater project. And again, funding is an important key with donations, with putting some of those projects together. Our master planning is a key component to putting those funds together, and if we want state and federal funding, we have to have a master plan, a five-year plan, and it requires public input, an ADA transition plan, and a full capital plan. And just one last quick thing, so I can give you a wrap-up of all of it. This hopefully will give you a quick summary.
Escape into Mount Pleasant Parks. Escape into outdoor experiences. Our parks enable active lifestyles and promote connections between nature and our community. Our trails pave paths for adventures, and our parks promote family-togetherness. They are accessible to all, including our furry friends. Park staff arranges activities or lets you create your own. Our structures are made for celebrations or just catching a break from a long- Pleasant Parks embrace the relaxing Chippewa River to help you take a break from your digital duties. Our team is passionate about giving this community all that nature has to offer. The Parks of Mount Pleasant, make it your mission to meet here.
You can view that on our YouTube channel if you'd like, at your leisure.
Thank you, Chris. Do we have any questions for Chris? No? Well, Chris, thank you for your work. As I'm sure you well know, our community really appreciates our parks and appreciates your work and your staff's work, so-
Thanks.
Next on our agenda, we have our Community Improvement Awards for 2019.
Good evening. I'll try to make up some time for you. This is the 41st year that the Planning Commission's awarded Community Improvement Awards. There are two categories, residential and commercial. This is the sixth year that we've partnered with the students in the Graphic Arts Program at Gresham Isabella Technical Education Center to produce our awards. It's a great partnership that we really appreciate, and we're always excited to hear how competitive it is amongst the students in that program to produce the awards that we'll be giving out tonight. I do want to recognize the students that created this year's awards and their advisor, so that would be Malak DeBosse, Lauren Pash, and their advisor Andrea Langley, if you all three would stand so that we can show our appreciation. And if our award winners could come forward, we'll have, the mayor will be presenting you with your awards, and we'll get a photograph, and then you're free to take those with you. So our commercial award this year goes to 1218 through 1222 South Mission Street, Mission Street Enterprises. This is the Plaza with Blaze Pizza. And our residential award this year goes to Jerry Hansen Hoffman for her home at 1604
Do we have any additions or deletions to the agenda tonight? Seeing none, we'll go into our public input on agenda items. This is the time now, if you wish to speak on anything that's on our agenda tonight, you have five minutes to address the commission, state your name and your address, and just come to the podium. Seeing no one come forward, I will close our public input on agenda items. And we'll go to our receipt of petitions and communications. Manger Ridley?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I need to apologize for my voice tonight, I've got a cold, so I've got a little deeper voice than normal tonight, so I apologize for that. But under your petitions and communications tonight, we have your report on pending items, and you'll notice in there, we've put a tentative schedule together of your upcoming work sessions, and we will continue to work with the mayor and vice mayor on identifying priorities for future work sessions after that. We also have the November minutes of both the Tax Increment Finance Authority and the Downtown Development Authority, the January minutes of the Planning Commission and the Airport Advisory Board. There's a communication from City Planner Jacob Kane, reminding you of the open house schedule for the master plan, public open houses, and I would encourage each of you to attend one or all of those if you're available, so you would have an opportunity to interact with both the consultant and staff, and also any public who may show up. We also have correspondence in the packet from Mr. Bruce Kilmer regarding his thoughts on the election of the mayor. We had a correspondence from a resident indicating concerns with our overnight parking restrictions, and I have responded to that resident and explained to her why we have those restrictions in place, but I told her we appreciated her input because it's something that we regularly reevaluate. And then there was a correspondence, two correspondences from Glenn Irwin regarding the pedestrian special assessment lighting project on Michigan. And then on your dais tonight was a communication from Dan Inman, again regarding the pedestrian special assessment.
Thank you. Next on our agenda are consent calendar items. Are there any items that need to be removed from the consent calendar tonight? Seeing none, Manger Ridley, would you like to walk us through those?
Yes, we're recommending approval of the minute of your regular meeting of February 10th. We have four bids for your consideration this evening. The first one is for the mill and overlay of Pickard Avenue from Mission to Bradley. This project is partially funded by an MDOT grant, which we will ask you to formally accept later in the agenda. We expect the work to be done from April through June, and we're recommending the low-qualified bidder, which is Central Asphalt, for $540,608, which is within the existing budget. The second bid is our annual process for crack sealing, which is a preventative maintenance that we do on our streets to help them last longer. And again, we're recommending the low-qualified bidder of Wolverine Seal Coating for $46,652, which again is within the existing budget. And the third bid is for the reconstruction of the parking lot, which is number seven, and it's located at the northeast corner of Illinois and University in the downtown. And this project is being paid from the fund balance of the TIFA, as outlined in the budget. And again, we're recommending the low-qualified bidder of Robin Hirsch Excavating for $178,474, which is within the existing budget. And the last bid we're recommending is for the purchase of a washer-compactor, which is a critical piece of equipment at our wastewater treatment plant, and that piece of equipment failed earlier this year during one of our large rain events, and the staff unfortunately has had to manually deal with the debris and getting it out before it goes through our wastewater treatment process, which as you can imagine is quite labor-intensive and very dirty work for the staff. So we've been investigating options to either repair the compactor, the washer-compactor, or buy new. Our current equipment was over 10 years old and was an original prototype, and a new piece of equipment would cost approximately $70,000. So in the research, the wastewater staff found two pieces of used equipment that were available, and so we're recommending the purchase of one of those units, which is only a one-year-old unit from Duperron, which is the manufacturer of it, and they quoted an installed price of $47,000, which includes a newer, obviously a newer unit, and a unit that is actually much safer for the staff to utilize. So we're recommending the authorization of that purchase and the appropriate budget amendment from the Wastewater Reserve. The next item on the consent calendar is the Planning Commission is recommending that Planning Commissioner Corey Friedrich continue as the member to serve on both the Planning Commission and the Zoning Board of Appeals, as he has for the last number of years, so we're recommending you formally approve that appointment. And then we have two resolutions for MDOT. The first one is to update our street system map, which is what our Act 51 funding is based on. And generally, we review this map at the staff level each year, and if there's no changes, we can just certify it at the staff level. But this year, MDOT pointed out a section that they thought should not be on the map because their records showed it might have been turned over to private ownership, and upon our research, we agreed with them, and so we're recommending that short section of street be deleted. But we also took the opportunity to do a thorough review or an audit of all of the items on the map, and noticed that there were two sections of street that we have that weren't on the map, so we have two resolutions to add those to the map. So we're recommending you approve those three resolutions to update the map for our funding. And then the next contract with MDOT is related to the grant I previously mentioned for the Pickard Street Mill and Overlay Project, and this resolution would formally accept the $375,000 grant to fund a portion of that project, and so we're recommending you approve that resolution, and then lastly, approval of payrolls and warrants.
Commissioner Gillis.
Motion to approve the consent calendar?
Second, Commissioner Tolles. Discussion? Commissioner Gillis.
Just one question on the bids and quotations. We do have warranties set in place and for those three bids?
Yes, the standard warranties that we would typically have for those type of projects.
Seeing no other discussion, all those in favor of approving the consent calendar as presented, please vote with saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, the same. That is unanimous. Next on our agenda is item number 14, which is Consider Resolution Number Three as postponed from our February 10th meeting, and to proceed, to proceed with improvements and consider Resolution Number Four to accept the special assessment role, and set a public hearing for March 9th, 2020 regarding the Special Assessment District Number One, 2020. Manger Ridley, did you want to have a few comments?
Yes, I'll make a couple of comments. As you know, since we've talked about this a couple of times, this is for the installation of improved pedestrian lighting on Michigan Street between Oak and Washington. The original project cost that we estimated included the installation of 16 new standard black concrete direct berry poles to replace the existing 10 that are along that street. And consistent with prior installations, we recommended the creation of a special assessment district since the properties are Zoned CD5. A couple of meetings ago, you, the project was postponed, and you asked that staff look at a potential redesign to try to reduce the costs by reusing the existing poles to the extent possible, instead of changing over to the new standard pole. And so engineering has redesigned the project, which would leave eight of the existing poles in place, relocate two of the existing poles to different locations along that street, and purchase six new poles. Because the existing aluminum poles are more costly and require a foundation to be placed on them, there's slightly higher installation costs for those types of poles. So the revised project estimate for this redesign is currently estimated at $76,500 instead of the original $120,000 that the original design had. This option has a lower upfront cost because of using the existing poles, but has the potential of higher, longer-term maintenance costs. So your two options for you in front of you are the original design at $120,000, or the revised design at $76,500. And again, I would point out, both of those are estimates that are for the project, and both of those are out for bid right now, and we'll actually have bid prices coming up to know what the actual bidders are willing to do that project for. And then the last item that was mentioned at the meeting a couple of times ago was whether we could consider changing the special assessment allocation from the standard 70% property owner, 30% city, based on the history of the 2011 installation of the lights. So if so, we would recommend that those additional funds would come from the Capital Improvement Fund. So after deciding which Resolution Three you might want to move forward with, then you would consider Resolution Four, which would actually set a public hearing for March 9th, which is required under the charter.
Vice Mayor Perschbacher?
I would like to move to approve the optional Resolution Number Three with the revised cost allocation of a 50% to the Capital Improvement Fund for the updated revised
Commissioner Alziger?
Support.
Discussion? Commissioner Tolles? Commissioner Tolles.
I brought this up before, and I was just looking at the breakdown, which I got this afternoon. And additionally, brought it up to reuse and repurpose the 10 existing lights we had, which two of them had to be moved, and we're going to purchase six more. The base cost for the six fixtures looks right around $42,000. All the rest of the cost, I was trying to figure out how we're going from $76,500. Originally, it was $120,000, when the lights cost about $5,000 apiece and $1,000 to install them, which had been about $6,000, which is $36,000 for six. And I'm looking at the projected cost here, it's roughly about $42,000. But then you get looking at the other additionals here to move the other two poles, to add, install an electric meter, $3,500, and to actually run 1,350 foot of conduit, one-inch conduit in line, is almost $13,500. And I just feel this is not fair to go back to the landowners, okay, when we did all the rest of this under TIFA funding and city funding, and tell them, well, we made a mistake, we didn't get all this done, now you've got to pay for 50% of this. I'd rather see where we take 50% out of the capital fund and take the other 50% out of TIFA and have TIFA funds pay for it. I just don't think this is fair. All these additional costs here, you wouldn't have had that $33,000 or $34,000 in additional costs that we have now if it had been done correct the first time around. Now you're trying to go back and say, well, you know, we need to do this, and it just doesn't make much sense to me. And I will support Option Three on those two promises, but other than that, I'll be voting against it.
Any other, Commissioner Gillis?
I was an advocate for sidewalks to be paid for by the city 20 years ago. My first year as a city commissioner, myself and another commissioner sat in on a workshop where we found out that Act 51 money could be paid for sidewalks. Since that time, 2016, my first year, we have no longer asked for our residents to chip in 50% when the city commission decides that they need a sidewalk in the front of their house. So at this time, 100% of sidewalks are paid for by the city's taxpayers. I feel that lighting is somewhat of a similar animal, where if the city commission decides that we need lighting along a corridor, and the seven of us decide that's what we want to implement, that we should pay for that, not by asking the parcel owners, the property owners, to pay 30% or 50%. The TIFA has, I don't know if it has close to $300,000 in it, hundreds of thousands of dollars. It was a capture on the taxes from the downtown, where the taxes didn't come to City Hall and then roll out. They captured their taxes, and then they, the people that are on the TIFA decided where that money was allocated. I believe that the TIFA has enough money to cover the property owner's portion of this expense, and I think they should cough up the money and cover that portion. And then with the city Capital Improvement Plan or major street fund or whatever bucket of money that we want to get the other 50% out of. We continuously ask the businesses downtown, and we continuously finance the businesses downtown through marketing, through monies that we give them for facade improvements, for monies that we give them, $25,000 grants if they want to incorporate an apartment above their first-floor business. We give them money outright to use without being asked to be paid back. We do all sorts of things that, in my opinion, I would not spend our taxpayer monies on. Tuition reimbursement for all employees that want to take classes and get degrees, we as taxpayers pay for that. We just gave Parcel B, Michigan Community Capital, a $1.1 million tax abatement and sold the property next door for $65,000, reduced it $270,000, so that they could do their development there. We also pay for memberships, for Rotary Club memberships for employees, directors, and we pay for their lunches every Monday. And granted, those are small potatoes, small amounts of money, but every nickel turns into a dime, and every dime turns into a dollar. That's how I finance, that's how I finance my home. That's why I am here, trying to go through every line item and find ways that we can save money, or money that I don't think taxpayers would approve of us spending in certain ways. So when we turn around and we're trying to develop business in downtown, and then we turn around and put assessments from anywhere from $2,000 to $4,000 on the businesses along the Michigan Street, from Oak Street to Washington, I think that is a double-edged sword, and we're talking out of two sides of our mouth. As we say that we want them to be successful, and we want our downtown to do great, we turn around and we are taxing them again on lighting poles that we have decided is, has to go in down on Michigan Street. I am still not 100% sold on lighting everywhere in Mount Pleasant. I think safety is my number-one priority, and I am being convinced by the director and other people that have told me that that improves our safety and their job at keeping us safe because it lights up the areas. I also have residents that have complained when those light poles have gone up because of the amount of light that's coming into their home, where we've actually had to buy hoods to place on the light poles to try to direct the light down rather than in somebody's homes. And I think those cost like $300 every dome that we put on lid. So I don't feel that we should be passing those on to taxpayers, business owners that we are supposedly trying to support and improve our downtown. And on the same sentence, on the side, the second side of our mouth, we're saying, we're charging you $2,000 to $4,000 because we need decorative light poles downtown along Michigan Street. So I think we should be able to find allocations within our budget and within the TIFA's budget to pay for that. So I will not be supporting these assessments this evening.
One of the questions that came up before was on previous projects and how they were funded. And I thought our answer to that was that those previous projects also included some funding from the property owners.
That is correct unless it was in a residential-only area, and in those cases, the city taxpayers paid for the full cost of it. But if it was in a, what's now the CD4 or the CD5 area, ever since 2014, those have been split through a special assessment with 70% to the property owners and 30% from the city tax, or the City Capital Improvement Fund.
Commissioner Ronan.
Yeah, I just want to make sure I understand this. So we're not saying the businesses downtown are paying for this. We're saying the people who own those commercial buildings. It increases the value of the commercial building, I would assume, if you change the architecture around it. And as the value of the building improves, we're asking for a percentage of that back. Is that correct, or?
Well, yeah, the, it would be the property owners that are along Michigan Street from Oak to Washington that would be paying it. And yes, it's based on the assertion that better lighting creates a safer environment and has a positive impact to the businesses.
And my comment to that is, I don't think their property value is going to go up $4,000 after they pay for those lights. So I think they're getting the short change end of the deal.
One other comment, I don't think response on the last was totally correct. This is an assessment that's being leveled, and under that statute, this assessment must improve the valuation of the property. You're adding lights, there's already lights there, and you're adding six more lights. I don't see how this is going to improve the property. You have one landowner that I know there has assessed $4,600, and he's already got a light in place of his front that's going to stay there now. So there's nothing being added to his property. So how are you increasing its valuation when the light is still staying there? Before, you were tearing it down and replacing it with a cement pole, but it was going basically in the same spot. So I don't see how you're doing an improvement. It just doesn't make sense to me.
Vice Mayor Pirscherbacher.
My understanding is that we're going to reconstruct that street from Oak to Washington. The businesses are not paying for that. My understanding is that the streetscape improvements are going to include stamped concrete, trees, grates, benches, and trash cans that the local businesses are not going to be paying for. The only thing we're asking them to do is, because the lighting does make it safer down there, there are a lot of different businesses down there that have stated that they would appreciate this because it would help, that it's going to, we're asking them to help pay for this, the pedestrian lighting. We have reduced the cost. We're now reducing the amount that we're asking from them. We went from $59, $59 a foot frontage to 39, or $54.87 to $39.19. It's going to increase the value of the businesses down there because people are going to feel safer walking through there. They're going, there's a lot of businesses that could definitely use the lighting. And I don't understand, we're asking for a small portion to be added. And I understand, you know, I manage a building downtown, and at some point, we're going to be asked probably that same special assessment, which I'll support, because I want people to feel safe at night when they're walking through. We have a lot of foot traffic downtown at night. We have a lot of students that walk through here. I want to know that my, that the officers are safe when they're, when they're walking through downtown, when they're helping out. I want to know that the students are safe. I want to know that the community members are safe. And wouldn't you want your area to be lit so that you would draw more people in? I know I would, because it would just make everyone safe all the way around. I'm going to support this, obviously, because I did make the motion. But I'm supporting this because in the long run, it makes everyone become of value to the city, not just certain sections of the city.
You have any other discussion? Commissioner Tolles.
Another quick comment on that. We're talking about other sectors of the downtown area that are now going to get brick pavers and new garbage cans and the rest of these updates. What happened to those in the last 10 years on Michigan Street, when Broadway and Main Street got everything, and all those businesses were left out? It just doesn't make any sense to me. We give 270-some-thousand away on Parcel B. We do all this other stuff for businesses that are just coming in here now. And how are we taking care of the businesses that are here? And I'm not opposed to safety, but I'm saying, we give all kind of money away. It's just an open checkbook. Just take it, half of it out of the TIFDA, and the other half, the city pays. It's very simple. Then everybody's happy.
I want to say, the, I think what I'm hearing from a couple of commissioners is that we want, we don't want to levy any special assessment on the property owners and to have TIFA pay for that. And in that proposal, I see a problem, because the TIFA right now is sort of, is already committed to parking lot reconstructions around the city, and I don't think that there is an extra $40,000 for them to just come up with to pay for the lighting. And as you said, I mean, I think it points even to the past, when they did this project nine years ago, the TIFA didn't have enough money then to really do the lighting that we're asking now, and that's why you have limited lighting on Michigan Street. And so I think this is the city's response to say, couldn't get it done nine years ago, and we've updated our ordinance, so this is the best way we can go forward to get the lighting we want, to provide the safety we want. And yes, it is going to be asking some of the property owners to chip in. And I think we've addressed, you know, I think, I remember when we got the special assessment role back in January, we're saying, this is a lot of money. And it's going to be difficult for some of these people to come up with it. So we reconfigured the project, and now tonight, we have a motion on the floor to cover half the cost instead of 30% of the cost, which is going to be a significant reduction in the cost to the property owners. The idea that $4,000 in property value won't be raised, I actually don't think that that, I don't think that that claim is actually seen in the right way, because the lifespan of these light poles and these projects is probably somewhere between 15 to 20 years. And in 15 to 20 years, I think it's very likely that most of these properties will rise in property value, roughly $4,000, maybe more. I think last year, most properties in our downtown district, actually, the property values almost raised somewhere, off the top of my head, close to 3%. And that was very high compared to the rest of the city, and that actually was part of a conversation that we had last year about a different issue. But I mean, that was, that was a concern about a different, a different project, and why are, you know, why are the assessments so high? And we went over that, we met with Chris Cookie, our assessor, and he explained that actually, property values are rising, and the downtown is doing, doing okay. And so in 15 to 20 years, I actually think that we're going to see a benefit from, from the projects that we plan to do later this year. So I can't support paying it from the TIFA when those funds are already committed to parking lot reconstruction projects. And as most of us know, the capture is, is down to 0%. So the TIFA won't be collecting more money. And so they're kind of pot-committed to the things that they've already decided to pay for. And this is also a project that this commission has already voted on. I've voted on it twice in the Capital Improvement Fund in the last two years. Commissioner Gillis has done the same.
I didn't vote for the Capital Improvement Plan last year. I voted no.
Correct.
It's called Capital Improvement Plan.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. I stand corrected.
It's, the fund is different. Well...
But it's part of that plan, and that's, that's something that, you know, it's, it's one item of many plans, but that's something that all this commission has reviewed, and I think that moving forward to be consistent is, is better than scrapping a plan and actually, we're looking to improve our downtown.
Just one more. As we improve our downtown, we're costing our business owners or our parcel owners. Sometimes that's, they're too different, sometimes those are two different people. Just to give you an idea of what these charges would be, this is at the $54 per linear foot. One person will be paying $1,920, $2,800, $2,600, $4,000, $13,000, $2,000, $576, $3,300, $1,200, $2,194, $3,292, $3,566. Another parcel is going to be paying $3,127, $1,207, and the last parcel listed will be paying $5,486.
I believe those numbers...
And reduce those, because this was at the $54. Now we're going down to a $30, so you can cut those by, what, 30%? That's still a lot of money. If you're trying to make a business downtown on Michigan, and you're struggling to survive and keep your business downtown, which we're constantly asking business, property owners to... to do, and then we turn around, we tax them, the principal shopping district has a special assessment tax, and now we're taxing them for the lights at that kind of number. If anybody's a business owner out there, do you have five thousand dollars sitting around just to pay for lights? Do you have three thousand dollars to pay for lights? I don't think so. You're putting your money back in your business or you're trying to stay afloat. My opinion on this has changed. My opinion on this has changed because the city gives so much money away to everyone else. So if we can do it to other entities that are new to our town, we should protect our business owners that have been here and struggled for years and help them out too. That is my change of what I believed two years ago when we did these assessments. Just, just so you can be aware of where I'm coming from.
Commissioner Tollis.
I'd like to make one last comment. On your three percent increase downtown, that isn't totally correct. The stuff that I presented to the assessor, he took one of the highest parcels, which is the old Gover City Building, and left one-third of that out of the assessment. It wasn't factored in. There was a couple of other things that were there. And I guarantee you, there was no three percent increase in downtown. I've had a building down here for forty years that was totally rebuilt in nineteen eighty-four after the fire. Stuff is not increasing. Stuff is not increasing. I don't know where you're coming up with this. You can rent stuff for six, seven, eight dollars a square foot in downtown. You go out on Encore and Bluegrass and the rest of that stuff, that stuff is thirty-two to thirty-four dollars a square foot. So how is stuff increasing down here? I don't get it. And you've got empty parcels. You've got empty buildings down here. And I, I've paid, I pay my parking assessment and everything else. Lot eight is a disaster. It's next to my building. And that hasn't been fixed for the last fourteen years. It's just coal patch on top of coal patch. Senior citizens came walking across that. There's pits in it. And we're not fixing that yet. We're fixing one of the other lots. Because we don't have enough money to fix that. I will not be supporting this.
Seeing no other discussion, all those in favor, please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, the same.
Nay.
Nay. Can I get a roll call vote on that, please, for the record?
I believe we've already voted, Commissioner Tollis. So the vote was five to two, and the nays were Commissioner Gillis and Commissioner Tollis. So everybody knows where everybody voted. That's right. Next, I would move that we, I would entertain a motion to consider resolution number four to set up a public hearing for March ninth. Vice Mayor Perschbacher.
I move that we set a public hearing for March ninth on this resolution.
Commissioner Ronan.
I apologize, I was convinced it was something else. I missed that. Could we do that again?
Okay. Right now, we have a motion on the floor. We have a motion by Vice Mayor Perschbacher to consider resolution number four to set a public hearing for March ninth, is the motion. Commissioner Ronan.
I'd like to second that motion.
Okay.
To set the public hearing.
I will open the floor for discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor, please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And those opposed, the same.
Nay.
Nay.
So that passes five to two with Gillis and Tollis in opposition. Next on our agenda is item number sixteen, to receive the proposed two thousand fifty master plan as recommended, recommended by the Planning Commission and consider release for review and comment. Major Ridley.
Yes, at the February meeting of the Planning Commission, the Planning Commission recommended that the city commission receive the draft of the master plan and release it for the required sixty-three day comment period. This sixty-three day comment period is required by state law and is intended for the nearby units of government and utilities to have an opportunity to comment on the plan, but also an opportunity for the public as well. As you know, we've, you previously approved holding three public open houses in which staff from the consulting firm and city staff will be available to discuss the proposed plan with anybody who is interested in learning some more about it. And it is available on the website. So we recommend you accept the Planning Commission's recommendation and release the plan for the required sixty-three day period.
Commissioner Ronan.
I move that we release the plan for the sixty-three day hearing period as proposed by the Planning Commission.
Vice Mayor Perschbacher.
I support that.
Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor, please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And those opposed, the same. That is unanimous. Next on the agenda is consider a budget amendment for, we actually have two budget amendments. One is for Downtown Development Authority for alley reconstruction and the Department of Public Safety for a kitchen remodel. Major Ridley, would you like to?
Yes, the Mission Picker Downtown Development Authority has a project in their budget this year to reconstruct the alley on the west side of Mission Street, which is just north of Bellows Street. The bids were received and all of the bids were over budget. And so the DDA reviewed the bids and accepted the low bid. And they're recommending approval of a budget amendment to cover the bid amount plus the standard contingency for such a project. And these funds would be allocated from the Mission Picker DDA unassigned fund balance to have available for the project.
Commissioner Halsager.
I move to approve that budget amendment.
I just want to make sure, are those, is that the first budget amendment?
First budget amendment.
Okay. Vice Mayor Perschbacher.
I support.
Discussion. Commissioner Ronan.
Yeah, I didn't quite, I thought there was something about alleyways that happened a couple of years ago, that, that they were going to be funded by local people. And how is this alleyway different than, than those? I, I just, I know I should have asked that question earlier.
You are correct. We have a standard policy about alleys, as you indicated, where part of the funds for reconstruction are generally assessed to the adjacent property owners. The Mission Picker DDA Board, though, has felt that alleys are such an important component of the Mission Picker Transportation Corridor, that they have prioritized those in their budget as a high priority and have made the recommendation that the alleys that serve Mission Street businesses would be funded at a hundred percent from the Mission Picker DDA funds. So you're right, it is different than the rest of the alleys throughout the community based on their priorities.
Thank you.
Commissioner Gillis.
So as you can see, the Mission Corridor, they also capture taxes that, that doesn't come to City Hall and then be dispersed. They capture taxes, they get their little buckets of money, and then they, the DDA, who's on the DDA can decide how they want to spend funds. So that is no different than us asking the Tifa to spend funds for downtown lighting. Alleyways are used as deliveries for trucks. And so the DDA felt it was part of their maintenance, their purview, to then supply monies to refurbish and redo these alleys. Hats off to the DDA for not making the business owners in that corridor pay for that. And this is a perfect example how we do things differently depending on where they're located. So this money will be coming all from the DDA, is that correct, Miss Ridley? All the DDA's funds?
Yeah, that's what they recommended and that's what your approved budget recommends. Includes as well.
That is still taxpayer money. Don't, don't be confused. The DDA captures the taxes that should come to City Hall and they put it in their own buckets and then they get to decide where to spend it. So that still is taxpayer money. It is just that a portion of the money, the taxes that are raised from that corridor on Mission is captured by the authority. And then the people that serve as members on the authority decide where to spend it.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the budget amendment, please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And those opposed, the same.
Aye.
So that is six to one. Commissioner Tollis in opposition.
The second budget amendment we're recommending for you tonight has to do with the project that is in this year's budget to rehab and remodel the kitchen area in the Public Safety Building. As you know, that building is used seven days a week, twenty-four hours a day, three-hundred and sixty-five days a year. So a kitchen is an important component for the personnel in that building. So after gathering all of the pieces of the project together, we learned that the updates to the ventilation system are a bit larger than what we first anticipated when we put the budget figures together. So we're recommending a budget amendment of nine thousand five hundred dollars to also come from the Capital Improvement Fund, which is where the original funding came from, so that we can cover the full cost of the project so that it can be completed appropriately and according to code.
Commissioner Ronan.
I move that we support the capital improvement plan for the kitchen at the...
Commissioner Halsager.
Public Safety Kitchen.
I support that.
Okay. Discussion. Commissioner Tollis.
I have a question on the updating the ventilation system. What are we talking about on that?
It would be the ventilation system that is over the stove cooking unit. Paul, do you have other details to add to that?
Yeah, it, it's an up blast fan that goes to the exterior of the building. Currently, we have a low-grade residential fan that's in there. It doesn't expel any of the grease. And, and so this, this new fan, while we initially thought we needed a make-up air unit, we got with the, the building inspector at the county. And he told us that because we have air handling units running all the time, that we did not need make-up air. So that considerably, that cut the ventilation right in half. But this is actually going to go through the roof, which is about ten feet above the ceiling.
That answers my question. Last time I talked with you, they were talking about putting a make-up, complete commercial ventilation system with an Ansel system in there, which would have been about a ballpark about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, which I thought was ridiculous. And I never asked you who was requiring, requiring to have that put in.
We, we got that initially from a vendor. But then when, like I said, when the county building inspector Nate came over, he, he gave us the right specifications of what we need. And that's why I included in the memo of it only being exhaust only, so.
Thank you.
Further discussion? All those in favor of vote of the budget amendment, please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And those opposed, the same. That is unanimous, seven to zero. Item number twenty-one is consider contract amendment for the remaining sites in East Point Four as recommended by the Property Committee. Major Ridley.
In two thousand thirteen, the city and Joe Olivieri entered into a purchase agreement for Mr. Olivieri to purchase nine vacant residential lots along Batson Place. In exchange, he agreed to build houses according to a certain schedule on those nine lots. And seven of the houses over the ensuing years were constructed. In two thousand eighteen, he requested and the city commission approved a one-year extension for the building of the last two houses. One of the homes was supposed to be built by the end of two thousand nineteen, and that did not occur. So Mr. Olivieri is currently in default on the agreement. And the default provision allows the city to take back the two remaining lots by paying Mr. Olivieri the same amount he paid for them in two thousand thirteen, which was six thousand dollars per lot. Mr. Olivieri has now requested another extension to allow more time for the construction of the two remaining homes. And as you know, Mr. Olivieri's primary concern is the placement of the garage as required by the zoning ordinance for residential homes. Mr. Olivieri met with the Property Committee. And based on those discussions, I believe the Property Committee is recommending the following. They would like to recommend that we give Mr. Olivieri six months from tonight to obtain a building permit for the first house. Mr. Olivieri would also be required to obtain a building permit for the second house by January first, two thousand twenty-one. And both houses would have to be completed by December thirty-first of two thousand twenty-one. And the thinking was that that six-month time period would allow time for him and the Home Builders Association to potentially recommend an alternative location requirement to the Planning Commission and see if the Planning Commission is willing to consider an amendment for the garage location. So in these next six months, if it appears that there's not an agreeable alternative for the garage location, Mr. Olivieri would be able to withdraw from the contract and the city would pay him the original purchase price of those lots and then could market the lots for sale. After the six months, assuming he continues on with the contract, if he does not fulfill the amended requirements, he would be in default and the city would only be required to pay him one-half of the original purchase price of the lots, or three thousand dollars per lot. So we're recommending that you approve those amendments as outlined and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign a second amendment to the purchase agreement that would be drafted by the city attorney, including those terms.
Commissioner Halsager.
I move that we do that authorization to sign a second amendment for the project.
Commissioner Ronan.
Second, Commissioner Halsager's motion.
Discussion. Commissioner Gillis.
I was on the Property Committee in two thousand eighteen. Mr. Olivieri came to us saying that he had not built a new home in two thousand eighteen and that he didn't think he was going to be able to because of our new zoning ordinance and the requirements. He had built two homes in one year the previous year. So the two of us commissioners that were on the Property Committee at that time felt because he was essentially one home ahead, that in two thousand eighteen, that we would allow him not to build a home in two thousand eighteen like the agreement had stated, one home per year, and work with the Planning Commission or try to come up with some solutions to what he is saying the people that want to build new homes are, are not agreeing with. Two thousand nineteen, came and went, and Mr. Olivieri did not build a home. He had defaulted on his agreement that we made an exception in two thousand eighteen for. So I am not on the Property Committee this year. I've only been put on one committee this year. So I feel that we should not be extending this agreement. These lots were sold to Mr. Olivieri at a whopping six thousand dollars per lot. This is the subdivision on Sweeney Drive, west of Sweeney Drive, called East Point Five is where the last two parcels. Very high-end residential area, one of our highest residential taxing areas. And he is getting these lots at six thousand dollars apiece. I do not believe we should be making more amendments to this agreement. I think we should recoup our two lots and allow him to abate the, the agreement and, and we take them back in our possession. I am sure there are community members that would love to buy a parcel for six thousand dollars in East Point Five. That's right west of our new soccer field along Sweeney Drive. So as this amendment keeps being drawn out and we keep making concessions for someone that says they can't sell the lots, why don't we take them back? Put them on the market. We have plenty realtors that come in here and sit in the city commission meetings. I'm sure any one of them would love to place those on the market for us. And I'm sure that we would get more than six thousand dollars for them. So I will not be supporting this new amendment today. I'm sorry that I wasn't able to reach out to the property committee members and tell them of the experience that I know of, of 2018. But I really think this is a disservice to the taxpayers of Mount Pleasant, that we are continuing to allow this contract to go without having any new homes being built in East Point Five. I will be voting no on this.
I'm going to be supporting this. I think the property committee and the city in general has been really faced with a lot of misunderstanding and a lot of questions, especially considering the zoning ordinance. And I think that's to be expected, because we wrote a completely new document, and when you're used to running your business, or how you build, for 30 years, and then all of a sudden, things are changed, and actually not, you know, not everything's changed, but there's this perception that, hey, maybe, you know, maybe I can't do the same things that I used to. And certainly, Mr. Olivieri cannot build on these last two lots the way that he has previously. There are some changes in our zoning ordinance. But as a commission, I think we've sought to find solutions with the people who build in our community, who are landowners, and I think this is another opportunity for us to say, hey, we understand that you have some problems, and in this case, it's the garage setback. I think this gives us an opportunity to give Mr. Olivieri and the Home Builders Association an opportunity to really present a solution to the planning commission and say, this is what we'd really like. And then he also has an opportunity to build. And I think, I think actually, if Mr. Olivieri and others have a chance to build a building or a house under our new zoning ordinance, they might not find it as terrible as some have made it out to be. And then they might actually find that, hey, it's not so bad. And so I think this gives him all the options on the table, and us options too, because it's going to show whether or not we can work with our community members to find a solution, or if not, maybe we can move on and find other opportunities down the road. So I do agree with Commissioner Gillis that, you know, sometimes I am frustrated with the perception and the inability, or the, I wouldn't say the inability, but the, the maybe a little less than most, less than willing attitude towards our zoning ordinance. But I think this really puts some firm deadlines in place and opportunities, and so I will be supporting this plan, and I applaud the property committee for coming up with a solution. I don't think everybody's going to love it, but it charts a plot forward, and that's why I'll support it.
Commissioner Ronan.
Yeah, I served on that committee, and, you know, Mr. Olivieri took on a project around 2012. It's 78% complete. He was going to build nine homes. He built seven of them. They're fine homes. They generate a lot of tax revenue. They bring money into the city. I am sensitive to Commissioner Gillis's concerns, but we thought giving him an additional six months to see if he could complete that project that he took on was worthwhile. And there's also a fairly harsh penalty if he doesn't. So I think, I understood his concerns, and I think we just disagree on this one.
Vice Mayor Perschbacher.
Though I will support this motion, I do have reservations. I do hope that this will drive the Home Builders Association, along with the builders in the area, to bring forward what they feel is a reasonable change to our zoning ordinance. It just feels like they've been dragging their heels for a year, and it would be nice if they would bring something forward that we could work with. So I am supportive of this because of the fact that it will bring them forward to possibly actually work towards changing that, if that's what they want.
Commissioner Tolles.
Couple of comments on this. With all due respect on your comments, what you said was, Mr. Olivieri has met his fiduciary duty and built seven out of the nine houses until the zoning ordinance changed. And you're telling me right now, well, he can't build what he built there before. Well, that is the problem. That's a problem. Nobody wants to build a house that's got a reset garage on it. It doesn't match the other units there. And this has been going on now. We're on our third year on this, and it's very simple. You get a task force of the builders and a planning commission, and you sit down and iron this out. How long is this going to go for? And you're worried about now, well, he's breached his contract, and we're going to cancel it out at $6,000. Well, look how many houses have been built in the city of Mount Pleasant, new houses last year. One, go to Union Township and see what they've built. The problem is the zoning. You've got to get that fixed. But just keep kicking it down the road, and we're not going to get it fixed. What's better? Have a builder build something on there, and then collect the tax base on it, or just leave it vacant? I don't care if you get it back for $3,000 lot. What are you going to do with it? Nobody wants to build on it. Seems simple to me. I'll be supporting it, because what do you want the lots back for? Nobody's going to buy them. Nobody's going to buy them. And we need to get this done. I don't see how the builders are dragging their feet. The builders have been here. They've sent numerous letters and everything else. And the last time I brought it up, that we should have a task force meet with the planning commission, I was told no. That's why we have a planning commission to figure this stuff out. Well, they're not getting it figured out, and we're going on the third year.
Commissioner Gillis.
Well, I'd buy that lot for $6,000 if it's just for an investment, because I know it's going to be worth more than $6,000, so let's put her up for sale. Second, Planning Commission has been inundated with builders and letters, and we as a commission sent their concerns back down to the planning commission for them to hash it out. They have decided they are not doing any changes to the zoning ordinance until 2021. So that's all of 2020, because 2021 is next year. So if he's supposed to build something in this year, he's building it under this zoning ordinance, because they have already said they are going to allow this zoning ordinance to settle, for people to get used to it, and to people to build under it. So nothing's going to happen as far as changing the setback of the garage, because they have already had that on the dais, they have already discussed it, they have already had a work session with the builders. So I don't know where you think anything's changing in the zoning ordinance this year, unless something happens and they come up with something that they're going to look at. But they have already did this work, they have already decided they were going to let it stand for a while. I'm sure there are builders out there that can accommodate this zoning ordinance. We are not the only municipality that has this type of zoning ordinance, where they want the garage in a different location. And it was voted on three years ago. So we're still fighting with builders to get on board. And if they don't want to get on board, then we would take the lots back at $6,000, and we put them up for sale, and you can mark my name down as buying one.
Mayor, if I may, because I did meet with some members of the Home Builders Association a couple of weeks ago, and we talked about the fact that the planning commission has talked about it multiple times, and their last direction was that they didn't want to make any changes till 2021. But I did commit to the Home Builders Association that if they came up with a reasonable alternative that would be different than what the current zoning ordinance is, but doesn't take us back to, you can build the garage wherever you want to, if they had a reasonable alternative, that we would do our best to get it in front of the planning commission yet this year to see if they would consider a reasonable alternative. So I did make that commitment to them on behalf of the city. Now, certainly at the end of the day, the planning commission gets to decide if that's a reasonable alternative or not, and they make recommendations, but I did tell them we would attempt to do that.
Thank you, Ms. Ridley.
Seeing no other discussion, all those in favor of the recommendation from the property committee, please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed the same.
No.
So that passes six to one, with Gillis in opposition. Next on our agenda is item number 22, which is consider appointments to various boards and commissions as recommended by the appointments committee. And I will turn this over to Vice Mayor Perschbacher, who is the chairman of the appointments committee.
We have been going through the vacancies that we have on boards and meeting, trying to meet what is needed for those boards through the applications that we received. We came up with three appointments, but we're unsuccessful in reaching all three individuals at this time. We will be bringing this back to the meeting on March 9th with, hopefully with the appointments. But I'd like to ask the public that if you're interested in serving for the city, doing something involved in working on a board, we have numerous boards, numerous vacancies, and all you have to do is go to the city website, click on boards and commissions, and you will find a place to, you'll find out all of the different boards and commissions we have, and a place for an application. And I encourage individuals to get involved, because this is how you make change. This is how you move your city forward, is by getting involved.
Okay. Next on our agenda is item number 23, which is consider a closed session pursuant to subsection 8C of the Open Meetings Act for strategy and negotiation session.
Just discussing, if you needed to postpone that. I think you can take no action on it if you want to, or you could postpone it until the next meeting, if that's what you want to do. It probably is cleaner if you want to postpone it.
For the appointments?
Yeah.
Okay, so I move to postpone the appointments until the March 9th meeting.
Commissioner Ronan.
I second it.
Okay. Discussion. All those in favor, please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed the same. Okay.
That's good.
All right. Next is item number 23, which is consider a closed session, according, consider a closed session pursuant to subsection 8C of the Open Meetings Act for strategy and negotiation sessions connected with the negotiation of a collected bargaining agreement. I believe we have a roll call vote. We need a motion. Yep, so I'd entertain a motion. Commissioner Lallone.
I would like to make that motion.
Seconded by Commissioner Perschbacher, or Vice Mayor Perschbacher.
I second.
And Jeremy, would you like to do the vote?
Commissioner Tolles?
Yes.
Commissioner Ronan?
Yes.
Commissioner Lallone?
Yes.
Commissioner Gillis?
Yes.
Commissioner Halsager?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Perschbacher?
Yes.
Mayor Joseph?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. Next on our agenda is announcements on city-related issues and new business. Commissioner Gillis.
I'm going to start doing a little segment called "In the Political Arena" on commission time to speak, just giving you a little pre-insight on what goes on behind the scenes. I have been advocating for a mayor elected by the people for 16 years. When I was on the planning commission in 2005, I and other community members were asking the city commission to consider a charter amendment. This is not something I have just became concerned about. I am not advocating this charter amendment, because I was not selected mayor last year or this year. There are people that are trying to frame this charter amendment in this way. This is incorrect and not true, and not at all what is happening here. In 2005, I served a full term of three years on the planning commission. For the past five years, I have been a member of the city commission. I have seen the partisan politics at work every single year for the selection of mayor and vice mayor by the commission. It is not a nonpartisan decision. It has always been a partisan decision. One year, I was pressured to select a vice mayor that I did not want to support by my own party and my fellow party commissioners that were on the city commission at that time. It was the wrong decision, and I have vowed to never let that happen again. Every January, there is a majority. That would be only four city commissioners that select who will be the mayor. Every January I've served, it has been a party who holds the majority advantage to select who they want for mayor. It is not based on longevity, or experience, or items accomplished, or who would be best suited to be mayor, or the public's desire. It is not based on how much involvement in the community you have had, or if you have been serving the community for a lifetime. It is based on party politics. Plain and simple, this kind of partisan politics could be totally eliminated if the community could elect their mayor. Mayor selection is a partisan decision. Let's not forget, the city commission is supposed to be nonpartisan. I have seen the selection of mayor based on a party wanting to promote this individual's political aspiration to a higher political office. They use our mayor seat as a position of training, so that this person can run for a higher office. I know this for a fact, and those in our community that have watched this happen know it too. This is very disturbing, and our selection of mayor should not be based on one party or for a mayor to get training. I do not believe a person with no experience should be mayor. I do not believe a person with only a year's experience should be mayor. I do believe our citizens should choose our mayor, and always have, long before I've had a privilege of serving. Let the voters decide who they want to represent our city and our community members, not a majority vote by one political party and the agenda politics that go along with that. We know the mayor runs the city commission meeting and represents our city at community events and at large. Another duty is to appoint commissioners to our boards and committees. This also can be used for partisan politics or vindictive paybacks. I have been serving on three boards every year since I was elected by the people in 2016. This year, both myself and Commissioner Tolles were only put on one committee each. We both had given Mayor Will Joseph four different boards we were interested in. We both were placed on one each as veterans of this city commission. For comparison, Mayor Will Joseph is on seven boards out of the 13. Vice Mayor Perschbacher is on four, Commissioner Lallone on two, Ronan, our new commissioner, on three, and Commissioner Halsager, another new commissioner, on four committee assignments. I have been advocating for mayor elected by the people for 16 years, and asked to be put on the charter commission to discuss this issue this year. I was not put on the board. With my experience on both the planning commission for three years and the city commission for the fifth year, and a lifelong resident, I was placed on only one single board this year, the city CMU liaison board. With Commissioner Tolles' experience on the ZBA for eight years, Forrest Chair on the EDDA for Union Township for 11 years, and 58 years as a city resident, he was only placed on one board, the audit committee. All the other commissioners were placed on more than one committee. Our mayor, Will Joseph, himself on seven of the 13 boards, including the board of the charter committee, which is where the issue of the mayor-elect being, going to a vote of the people is decided, from the three people on the charter commission makes the recommendation to the city commission. Having an elected mayor by the people removes the animosity between commissioners that stems from these kinds of partisan games. I have always advocated an elected mayor by the people, or at least to be put on the ballot to let the people decide on a charter amendment. I have felt this way long before I became a city commissioner. I believe in our community to make a wise choice in the decision of mayor. I do not believe it is conducive to a working board to- I do not believe it is conducive to a working board to have that control and the party politics that are being played. It is no way to start a new year. It places commissioners in an uncomfortable position and pits us against one another. Unfortunately, I can almost guarantee you that you will not see this charter amendment on your ballot this November. The decision of a charter amendment for the people to vote on their own selection of mayor has already been decided by our mayor, Will Joseph, and the Charter Committee members that they put on there, and this is very unfortunate. I'm sorry.
Commissioner Ronan?
I find your comments quite offensive, Commissioner Gillis. Just to give an update, I have been placed on the Charter Committee. I've got half a dozen articles I've downloaded that I'm looking at on research that's been done in different communities, looking at mayor versus non-mayor. There's lots of research and lots of data that could be collected. Whatever we, whatever I do, it'll be based on a solid understanding of what the science is regarding this and how it'll best work. There's nothing partisan about it for me, so I find your comments offensive.
I know during your campaign, you were against selecting a mayor because that was one of the questions that were asked by legal voters, and at that time, when you were campaigning, it was so, I just...
That was before I had any... There's a difference between having an opinion and then being placed on a board where you're in a position to make an informed decision. So you're right, if you were to ask me as an opinion, I'm not sure it's a great idea. But when I'm placed on a committee, I'll absolutely do due diligence, and it'll be based on what the research suggests, not necessarily on any partisan... At least, that's my...
Any other announcements or city-related business? Seeing none. We will open up the public comment on city-related business. You can come to the podium, state your name and your address, and you have five minutes to address the commission. Seeing none, I will close the public comment section. And we will recess for a closed session in Conference Room E, and we will come back out to, for item number twenty-five, and then we will have a work session afterwards to consider a couple of different items, so... Okay. We are back in session, and we have item number twenty-five, which is consider approval of labor contract with our full-time firefighters represented by the Police Officers Labor Council. And I would entertain a motion to approve labor contract as presented. Commissioner Alsager?
So moved.
Vice Mayor Perschbacher?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please vote by saying aye. Aye. And those opposed, the same. That is unanimous. Okay. We will now recess upstairs to Conference Room A to discuss potential drain easement for Mission Creek Dam and a discussion on recommendation from the Tax and Encament Finance Authority regarding eighty thousand dollars from the Economic Initiatives Fund. Public is welcome. So we're here in Conference Room A to start our first work session in two thousand twenty, and our first discussion is gonna be on a potential drain easement for the Mission Creek Dam. And our goal is to obtain some advice and consent, I suppose, from the City Commission. I would like Major Ridley, and we have Stacy Tawari, our city engineer here, to answer any questions. You guys?
So I'll give a quick overview of it, but Stacy certainly understands the details better than I do, as does Jason, so the two of them may be answering more of your questions. But what our current situation is, is we're planning to remove the dam at the Mount Pleasant Center this year. We have a project that's approved to do that. And our estimated cost for that dam removal is approximately three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And we've received tribal two percent funding to cover a hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars of that project cost. We know down the road, probably in the next seven years or so, we also need to upgrade Crawford Road, or the culvert under Crawford Road, based on what we saw during the two thousand seventeen flood. And we really, I shouldn't say we, Stacy really hasn't designed that project yet, but her best guess is that cost down the road could be somewhere in the six hundred thousand to seven hundred thousand dollar range for the work that is needed there. So over the last year, Stacy and Jason and John before him have been talking to the Drain Commissioner because he's working on a county-wide drain, or county drain project that is west of the Mount Pleasant Center land and west of Bamber Road, and is looking at upgrading that county drain, again, based on the flooding from two thousand seventeen. And in order to do that, he needs to expand the culvert that goes under Bamber Road to allow more flow to be able to go through there. But he can't automatically put that flow on our Mount Pleasant Center property. And so he began talking to us about making it a more comprehensive drain project, and that what he was proposing is, if we gave him a drain easement to allow the Mission Creek area to become part of the county drain system, that he would be able to put in, or take out the dam for us, and also upsize what's needed at Crawford Road as part of this bigger project. And because that bigger project affects multiple properties, he spreads that cost over multiple properties. So his estimates are, he could do all the work he needs to do west of Bamber, do the two projects that we eventually need to have done, and our costs would only be slightly higher. And the best guess he has, again, it's dependent on the actual design and the bids, is that the city cost for that work would be three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars, but we would get the dam removed and get Crawford Road upgraded at the same time. So the most significant benefit, Stacy and Jason did a great job of outlining the pros and cons of this, but the most significant one in my mind, the most significant benefit, is we get both of those projects done at a slightly higher cost than what we would have paid if we just did one project, and it ties into the county drain system, so it's a more comprehensive solution. On the downside, the most significant con, I think, is the Drain Commissioner then has control over that piece of land that goes through the Mount Pleasant Center property and into Mission Creek Park. And it would be about a hundred-foot wide easement that he would have control over. In that hundred feet, we wouldn't probably be able to develop anything anyway in there, so him having control of it doesn't hurt future development. It's just we're giving control to a county-elected official instead. But we believe if there's interest in doing that easement, that we could suggest to him some protections that could go in the easement that might protect the city in the future. But before we started spending a significant amount of time drafting the easement and deciding what of those protections we should put in, we wanted to have a conversation with you to make sure this was a concept that you even supported, because it doesn't make sense to spend a lot of time on it if your answer is, no, we don't want to tie into the county drain system. We would prefer just to do our own project. So that's what we're looking for tonight, is any questions you may have on the data that Stacy's put together, and then a general direction from you about whether you think it's worth us drafting an easement with the Drain Commissioner that would later come to you for consideration for approval. Any significant things to add to that, Stacy?
No, I think that you covered it. I guess the only other major con would be any future drainage assessments. We would become part of the drainage district, so there's a potential that any projects that were done in the future, the Drain Commissioner could assess the city for those as well, which could be a pro or a con, depending on what the project is, because if it's a project that benefits the entire drainage district, then it would be assessed over all of those property owners again, and not just the city, so that would be a shared cost again, and not just the city cost. So it just depends on what that specific project would be. If it would be a pro or a con in that case, something to consider.
So if it was an improvement in Union Township in their drainage area, not necessarily improvement on our properties or within the city limits, we could still be assessed for that?
A small percentage, yes, we could.
And when you're saying give control to the Drain Commission, that's just an easement, but not by title?
Correct, it would just be an easement to him? So he wouldn't have ownership or anything? It's just an easement that he would have access to that land for the drain?
And that's a hundred feet of the creek on either side?
Hundred feet total, right?
Yeah, fifty each side.
George?
My lack of knowledge about drains is profound. But, you know, obviously, as someone who doesn't know anything about this, I'd worry about. I mean, if someone was dumping something into the drain, I mean, if there's some protection about that, and if something upstream, does this make any sense?
Well, really, and that's part of where this project's coming from, because they can't open up that Bamber culvert and enlarge it and allow all that velocity of water to come through the Mount Pleasant Center property because they could flood out that property, so they did a comprehensive.
I understand that concept.
Right.
But is there other contaminants that could be put in this in some way? Would it cause a risk, or is that just a silly question?
No, I mean, if there was anything that was coming, it would be, it's all coming there now. All of that upstream area is in that same drainage district that's coming through the Mount Pleasant Center property. We're not adding any new tributary flow areas to that. It's just, they don't have jurisdiction over that creek, but it all drains there now. It's actually pretty odd that the drain stops there and doesn't continue all the way to the river. I'm not sure what in history happened that...
But you're right, in theory, there could be something contaminating the drain that would flow into our property, but the risk isn't increased under this scenario in any way. The risk is already there.
Yes.
Except the assessment isn't there.
Right, the assessment would be there, yeah. And the map that we gave you, the Assessment District is quite large. It's outlined in that black dotted line. And so, you know, we are a fairly small part of that entire Assessment District when you look at the map.
And they would do that assessment by property acreage?
Roughly, yeah.
And I need to be clear that easement would go not just through the Mount Pleasant Center property, but also through the Mission Creek Park as well, because Mission Creek Park is on the other side of Crawford Road, and it would go through there all the way to the city limits. And we did check with the city attorney about that, and he said because it's an easement only and it's not ownership, that's okay through the park system, because it's not any transfer of ownership or any rights. So he did look at that. Yeah, I knew you would ask about that. And he also looked at the state deed and indicated, again, since we're not transferring any ownership, that that is allowed under the deed from the state without any approval from the state. And then lastly, we also looked at the memorandum of agreement with the Saginaw Chickwa Indian Tribe, and they have an opportunity for input if we develop something. I'm not sure an easement is really, a drain easement is really a development. But I did reach out to Frank Cloutier last week and told him that we were having these conversations, and said certainly, nothing will get approved Monday night, but if there's any concerns you might have about that, we would want to know that before we get too far in the easement process. And he said on the surface, he didn't see any major concerns, but he would certainly talk to a couple of people and get back to me. So I think we've covered those three critical areas in that regard.
Any other questions?
Just in coming, it sounds like a good idea to combine the projects. Does anybody have any concerns with moving forward with the easement?
Pete?
I do. I don't know why we're spending any more money on this regional summer property until we get a clear title. This is just a waste.
We have to remove the dam anyways.
Well, I know you have to remove the dam, but it's not mandatory. You gotta do it right now, and the tribe, their two percent money is good for a ten-year period.
Has the state given us a deadline for the dam removal, Stacy?
They haven't given us a firm deadline, but I would say within the next two or three years, we would have to, we had to give them a plan within a year that said, we either had to repair the dam or remove it. It couldn't be left in place as it was because it's a regulated dam. So they've given us some time to get the funds together and actually do that project. So we're not under a firm mandate, but I would put that in two, in two or three years from when we originally started those conversations.
Do you have any other concerns, Pete?
No, other than we haven't heard anything from the state in Michigan, which I told you, we're probably not gonna hear anything from them because basically, it's gonna take an act of Congress to reverse what's been done with that property so far, and I don't think we're gonna get that done.
Did we get two percent funds that covered all the cost of that dam replacement?
A hundred and ninety-two thousand of it, out of our estimated three hundred and fifty.
And so is the Drain Commission gonna pitch in then? Are they gonna help us with that? Since we're giving...
Our new estimated assessment would be three hundred and eighty-five thousand. So, no, the Drain Commissioner does not put any money into it. He assesses all of the affected property owners, so we would be responsible for three hundred and eighty-five thousand, this is best guess. And of that, a hundred and ninety-two could be covered by the tribal two percent money we received. But it would save us having to do the Crawford Road project in six or seven years.
Is there any timeline that they're looking to get this done by?
Hugh actually wanted to get started last year, but we had a lot of research to do. So he has indicated that if possible, he would like to move forward with it this year, right, Stacy? If he can pull that off.
Good.
Last, or next year at the latest, but they really would like to do it this year because of all the flooding issues that have happened upstream of Bamber.
In two thousand seventeen?
Yes.
Okay. I was, I was just double-checking if there was some other...
No, not since, but if they're just...
And who's the Drain Commissioner?
Robert Willoughby.
Mine would be concerned at this point is that, that we just, that we're open and that the tribe is fully aware of what's going on, and that they're, they seem to be open to the project.
And what I will do after tonight is I'll send a formal written indication to the tribe just so that we have it documented and give them some timeline of when to get back to us if they have concerns about it, so that there aren't any surprises with that.
George?
Yeah, I'm sort of sensitive to, after all, this concern, to be honest. I mean, I think we should go, I'm not, I see them as two different things, right? I mean, this is a project, right? And then the overall concern, should, should we have a work session at some point? Will we discuss, or is this too much? Or are we just not ready to do that at some point, to discuss the whole issue, or will we...
I think they're two separate issues.
I think they're two, I agree, they're two separate issues. And I'm not trying to conflate them, but, but I mean, it, it, you know, at some point, maybe we should have a, so, you're right, they're two separate issues. I'm not speaking to this issue, I'm speaking to the veteran. Is there some timeline to have a work session where we discuss that issue?
I think we're, I think Nancy probably has better knowledge of what's going on with the state and with Mike Comier.
Within this year, or...
Oh, yeah. We, we've been waiting to hear back from the state. We offered some solutions to the, or not, we, Mike Comier's office offered some solutions back in August, and we've been waiting to hear back from the state about the viability of those solutions, and have not heard yet. So a couple of weeks ago, I met with Representative Houck and asked him if he might be able to help us get an answer. And so I think until we have an answer to that, I'm not sure much conversation would be very worthwhile, until we have a better understanding of where the state is.
But we anticipate by the end of the year, we have...
I would hope so, but I thought we'd have it by the end of last year, Commissioner, so, I'm working on it.
It's a bigger ball of wax than we have.
Yeah, right, yeah. Yeah, right, yeah, yeah.
Seen any other comments, concern, questions? So we can move forward.
Okay, we will start working with the Drain Commissioner and bring you something for formal approval then.
Thank you, Stacy.
Good, thank you, Stacy. The second item on our work session agenda is, um, Michelle's item. And as you'll recall, in the two thousand nineteen budget, we tend, or you tend to probably allocated eighty thousand dollars from the Economic Initiatives Fund to the Tifa Board to create a business incentive program. And they made a recommendation last October of how they would spend that, those funds on marketing. And you talked about it in November and said you weren't really comfortable with that recommendation. So you sent it back to them with some parameters which are outlined in Michelle's memo at the bottom of the first page. And so the Tifa Board met this year and is took into consideration your, um, feedback to them, and has come forward with a revised recommendation to spend forty thousand dollars this year out of the eighty thousand dollars plus the approximately sixteen thousand we were spending on marketing. So they're recommending that this year we only spend forty instead of ninety-six, which was their original recommendation. And the second to last page of the memo outlines how those funds would be allocated this year. So before we bring it to you for formal consideration, like last time, we wanted to get your reaction to what they've proposed and assess your comfort level to know if this is closer to what you would be comfortable with, or whether we have more, they have more work to do.
George?
Again, I, I, it just, uh, it has a steep argument for me, I had some discussions, I was, so it's just something I'll put back. I, I'm really glad for it in November, so I don't spend eighty thousand dollars on marketing. I, I'm very appreciative of that, but, has there been the survey, and I, I, that's all, and you talked to the people who are involved in this and said, what do you think of work, is that what this is? So has there been some survey data, some fall tracks, or, I don't know, what do you, kind of, those types of, you pass them, what do they think they help their businesses down, probably?
So I, I don't think we've done a survey.
I mean, they, I mean, I, how did they come up with, Michelle?
And Mayor's on the Tifa Board as well, so, so what he said, "we," I think that's what he was referring to.
Right.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Um, I mean, the Tifa, the Tifa Board is supposed to represent those business interests, and we have, you know, we have different business, uh, businesses represented on that board. We've, we've got, um, Sarah Christensen from Green Tree, you've got Rick Swindlehurst, uh, you've got Brian Reeferich, um, Rachel Blizzard.
And just a group of people, I'm not hearing, I, I, I...
Right. And so they represent a, you know,
Yeah.
Uh, you know, a, a variety of, of businesses that are downtown. And, and the thing, like, I'll be honest, I wasn't excited, I have not been jumping, um, out of my boots to be like, yeah, let's spend a bunch of money on marketing. But I think from their perspective, and they're the ones on the front lines doing this, is that marketing is the, one of the first things that small businesses just don't always have the funds for. And so that's why a lot of this money is slated for marketing. And I, you know, I stress to them, hey, the commission wants to see something that is, you know, the Tifa is supposed to increase taxable value. So you have some, some de- money designated for blade signs, there was some discussion of, maybe we could do, uh, I believe in, uh, where is it? Um, the print materials.
This has been going on for a long time, so I'm not trying to get you to bail on anything, and I apologize.
No, but I wanna ask you, I wanna, you know, try to catch you up as much as I can, but, um, in, in the print materials, they spend, uh, the plans is spent ten thousand dollars. And, you know, they have a brochure, flyers, and there was some discussion of having like coupons for different things. Um, and that could be something that, you know, blew up, last year's commission really wanted something, how do we measure the return on investment?
I'd like to see that.
There is no measurement.
That was, that was one idea, a measure, how do you, how do you measure the response rate for all of this print material?
And the last page identifies some other measurements that they came up with that to, to try to address that concern as well.
Right. You know, if I, if we had all the money in the world, I'd say, let's, you know, try to redo all the infrastructure downtown and, you know, get off, get off the electric grid and solar roofs and panels, but we, at this point, there, that's, that's not what they're interested in necessarily, and there, there's just not the money for it.
How, how many empty storefronts out in downtown here, I have not counted?
Empty storefronts?
Oh, you know, places where there's nothing.
Um, but, no, it, it's okay, some of them are empty, but there might be a reason behind it, like someone is planning on a restaurant, but they've taken a, I'm gonna say a long time, be nice, um, and then...
So count those, they're big.
Uh, right.
I would count those, if I could.
I would, I could easier do it in a percentage, um, overall of square footage. So it's just shy of four and a half percent.
Four and a half percent.
Right, square footage. Square footage, correct, correct. The problem is, right now, there are a couple very visible ones, so as you're walking by the street, you see...
Yeah.
A Broadway mate, no, it's okay.
I, 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 no comment, I, I, just, uh, as long as they're measuring what they're doing, I guess, I, I, yeah.
Um, any other comments?
There, there was some talks about having the freshman, I'm sorry, no, I, I, yeah.
No, it's fine.
There was some talk about having freshmen involved in the city, that's, you know, the, you know, the county university, and maybe they're not exposed to the city, so we talked about maybe talking with, uh, uh, Robert, President Davis, and the Provost, and saying, hey, can we involve them in downtown stuff, doing orientation, and, you know, can we use some coupons for that, or some of these coupons, I mean, would they be, um...
That's where some of that print material would go.
So, so, so how that would go to, um, okay.
Yes. Students and their parents.
I'm sorry?
Students and their parents.
Student and their parents, yeah, oh, okay, but, they have the money, you know?
There was a lot of talk of targeting, you know, we have a lot of different events that come to town, um, not only just our CMU students, but there's, you know, high, high school athletics and different organizations that come to Mount Pleasant, because we are in the middle of the state. And so we could, you know, use some of those print materials to target those people and say, hey, while you're in town for the weekend, you can come downtown and have dinner, or shop, or...
Yeah, Morrie Court has it on, yeah.
Right.
So you're way ahead of me, so I gotta...
And you see, you'll see, like, you know, we spend a lot of money, not a lot of money, but a decent amount of our money here on like, uh, internet ads, like Facebook, Instagram, those are things I think that, and Google, those are things that we thought people are gonna use, people, if you're sitting at Morrie Courts and you're gonna search, uh, you know, where do I wanna go to eat tonight, Google Ads is, is probably the number one thing that people are gonna go to. Um, and then it's also gonna target some of our student population, because they're, they're the ones who are using social media a lot more than, um, moms and dads necessarily.
I was gonna be, I've never heard of HootSuite.
Never heard of what?
HootSuite.
HootSuite.
It's for Twitter. Yeah, HootSuite is, is an application where you can do, um, all your s- social media posts in, in one platform, and it automatically populates them for you, rather than logging into Facebook, logging into Twitter, logging into Instagram.
I didn't know that either.
Does anyone have concerns?
Yes.
What?
Eighty thousand dollars is a lot of money to put into marketing for downtown, uh, can be used elsewhere. Um, just like they're finding, uh, or, or looking into the effectiveness of the Pure Michigan campaign. When Governor was holding back some of the funds, because there is no reliable source that that money works to increase tourism. Um, the Mackinac Center for some policy, I was reading something about that, for every hundred dollars that they spend in Pure Michigan, creates two dollars in the economy to restaurants and hotels and such. So there is not a bang for your buck, and I think this is one of those times where eighty thousand dollars, we're not gonna get the bang for the buck. And I think we should allow business owners to do their own marketing in their own way. Some businesses are left out of this marketing, uh, dynamic, um, it's hard to market for Mr. Tollis's business, his oil exploration. You'll never see a marketing for oil exploration on a billboard or in the advertising. So how fair is that for one business to get free marketing, free signage, free blades, free print materials, free radio, where the person that, right next to him, who also has a business downtown, does not get any recognition or, or any advertising benefit? And for the fact that we can't ever, uh, see the cost benefit for that. We assume there is, but there's no way to, um, to analyze that. Um, CMU students, we can market to CMU students all we want, CMU students are broke. They do not have disposable income, and when they do, they're probably gonna use it in the bars downtown, so. Just think it's a lot of money and we don't get, uh, our return on investment.
And just to clarify, Commissioner Gillis, the, the recommendation that we would be bringing to you would only be, only be for forty thousand dollars? Because we would recommend spend forty thousand dollars this year, evaluate it, and retain your ability to make a commitment for next year until you see the evaluation, is what it would be, just to clarify that.
Thank you.
Forty thousand is still a lot of money, I don't mean to say only, so...
Yeah, yeah. And, and I was just using eighty thousand, because it was over the two-year period.
Yeah. But the recommendation we would bring you would only be for year one.
Kristen, do you have any? Any other concerns? Pete?
Uh, I feel the same way, um, we've been spending a lot of money. And, uh, I really don't think, uh, it has that much effect, you know? I get most of the bars down, I go a few to the bar owners, their business is down twenty or twenty-five percent. Uh, the reason they're down twenty or twenty-five percent is the college students just don't have expendable revenue anywhere to spend.
There's also West College students.
Oh, yeah. To last, 'cause they can go to Michigan State for the same amount they can go to Central here. So why would you send your kid to CMU?
It's a complicated issue that we're dealing with.
Oh, yes. It's a complicated issue, but, uh, I, I think, you know, spending the seven or eight thousand dollars on that billboard, Foodies, I mean, I think that was just a waste of money. I, I thought it was gonna feed your businesses downtown here and just rotate them.
I think that would be the idea going forward.
Well, that's what I thought it was gonna be at first, and then I looked at that sign and I talked to a bunch of business people, I go, what the hell is Foodies? What is Foodies?
Oh, it's a thing.
That's a thing, yeah.
Well, I'm not hip on everything, but if I looked at it, I'm gonna go, well, I'm gonna look for a place called Foodies in downtown. It says Foodies Downtown Mount Pleasant.
It's just people who like food, people who are into food. I, I think, I've heard good comments about it, but I, I don't think, you know, you have to assess how much of an impact it has had, and, you know, that, that's where, um, you know, some of the econ props, right, could just, and I know I'm biased, because I'm at the university, but, but that, that's what they do. You know, I mean, they, they look at this stuff and they say, hey, uh, you know, what, what's the margins on it, what's the percent increase, and, you know, so I, I, so he asked me, I'd, I'd say, I have no clue, I'm becoming, I'm not smart enough. But if you look at somebody's econ props, I mean, that's what they train people.
Then, then I'm looking at bladed signs matching program, one-to-one matching up to five hundred dollars per business for bladed signs for new and existing businesses, to both reach pedestrians, foot traffic, and passing vehicles. How the hell is that gonna work?
And you're talking the bladed signs like a pole with like a flag that's, that's...
No, bladed sign projects from the wall, from the, from the exterior.
Which, which Bob's barber shop was trying to do, which got turned down. And he went to the city, showed them what he wanted to do, went and did it, and went back to get a permit, and they say, well, it's, no, it's not allowed now. Now, why would a business person bring in the plans and the drawing and spend three thousand dollars to do something, and then the city says, well, we told him he couldn't do it? That, that just doesn't make sense to me. It does not make sense whatsoever.
Blade signs are allowed, the one he had designed did not meet the requirements.
What is a blade sign?
I'm sorry, so, I'm just gonna, quick visual, imagine this is the exterior of the building.
A building.
It projects out.
Is it like Marty's Bar has one?
Yeah, that would, yeah.
Marty's is a copy, uh, copies and curls, the new, the new line, uh, has one.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's a difficult thing, it's not a projection, it's a hint, it just sticks out.
It just sticks out from the side of the building.
Cool, I thought it was one of the way for signs also.
No, it's not, those are called feather signs typically.
Ah, okay.
Good question.
And so why is that taxpayer responsibility or Tifa's responsibility to do that for businesses only in downtown? They get the benefit of all this and all this attention and all this monies we throw at them, for our whole corridor on mission, they're on their own. They're worried about their alleys getting potholes fixed, and we're figuring out ways to put blade and printed material and advertisement together.
Because you guys indicated you were willing to consider allocating that amount to the downtown, depending on what they came up with. So it was offered as an opportunity.
I do think we need to support our downtown, since it's not a business.
And if you look, if you look at tax value per acre, and you look at some of those tax numbers, downtown generates a lot of, generates a large tax base.
On a per acre basis, yeah?
It's just, I mean, if you look per acre, I mean, it's a high value, uh...
As every downtown is.
Mm-hmm.
Right, no, not, not that, yeah, but, so that's why we support it, because it generates a tax base.
Actually, doesn't, it doesn't provide as much taxpayer as residential areas.
Yeah, it provides, I don't know if it does or not, I have to look at that, my guess is it provides more.
It depends on the area of the city you're looking at, yeah.
Yeah, it depends on the area, but, but, then, the general residential area, uh... Good idea.
I guess what I'm, I'm, what I'm looking for from the commission is, um, you know, we've made a commitment, uh, to give the Tifa Board eighty thousand dollars to look at economic initiatives, and last year, we said, hey, go back to the drawing board, this is what they've come up early this year. Are we satisfied enough to, to vote on this, or are there serious concerns that say, that we should say, we need to look back and change the plan?
It looks to me like they made some good modifications, I think I could support this.
Okay. George, same way?
I, uh-huh. But, 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 but the caveat that, um, before the other forty thousand gets done, there has to be some data suggesting that there was something happening.
Mm-hmm.
And you think there's some issues.
Okay, I, I, but, but there's also lots of, at the university, we, we have, we have...
Are there other data things that you, um, that we should include as a requirement or a directive?
But the Tifa has money on its own, they have quite the ball of money still left, that supposedly is supposed to just go for parking lot reconstruction and the such.
That's what we committed to when we made those changes.
So now they're, they're as, they're not gonna use their own pot of money, bucket of money for their marketing, they're asking us to contribute another eighty grand, plus sixteen thousand, right? We're still...
No, no, the sixteen thousand goes away, this is just, and this was our recommendation, and when we took the Tifa capture to zero,
No.
Oh, that makes it feel better.
When we took the Tifa capture to zero, this was our recommendation to use that for parking lots, to try to make a dent in that infrastructure and instead give them money out of the Economic Initiatives Fund, so...
Question, is why, why did we take the tax capture, or was it eighty-eight percent or something like that before?
It was, yes.
And then we took it to zero?
Mm-hmm. And the, the primary ration, there were two primary reasons for it, is even at eighty-eight percent, it wasn't generating enough to deal with all of the maintenance of the infrastructure that was needed over the ensuing five to six years. And so there was constant reshuffling of things. And then the com- city commission was being asked to help with that infrastructure. So the city commissioners at that time said, if we're gonna do that, we wanna control all the infrastructure across the city, and we wanna look at it all and set priorities citywide. So if the city's gonna be responsible for infrastructure, we want it all, and we'll prioritize it. So we reduced the capture to zero at that time.
And it wasn't capturing enough.
Or was it spending the money in the right way? Because they didn't have enough money to, the, the way they...
Yeah, it was...
No, they raised seven, eight hundred thousand dollars, either when... No, they raised seven, eight hundred thousand dollars, either been doing a bunch of live work.
I don't think it was that, was it, man? What was the capture rate, what was it generating each year?
It was eighty-eight percent, and they captured.
It was eighty-eight percent, it was two hundred thousand.
So maybe it was above two hundred.
Something about, yeah.
Yeah.
But the tax laws have changed over the years, and we're no longer able to capture schools or the library.
Right.
And so all that we were left capturing is from ourselves and from the county. So, years ago, when we were doing larger infrastructure projects, we were capturing.
Much lower two thousand.
About two.
Right, but you were still capturing, Commission on Aging, ICTC, and the library, I think, only backed out, they, they kind of kept that in place, even when they were told, you know, that they didn't have to, and faced it. But the Economic Initiative Fund, this is not what I believe that is being supposed to be used for. At one time, there was, um, we were talking about trying to take rentals and move it back into homeowners, um, giving people, uh, your, some of the commissioners are, are worried about low-income people being able to find housing, this is a perfect fund for that, to allow people to have monies towards purchasing a house, or refurbishing a rental house, maybe even a student rental, back into a single-family home. We keep taking monies out for marketing and brochures and stuff, we're not gonna have any money to help our, our constituents and our community members, because we're so focused on downtown businesses. So we're taking another forty thousand dollars from the Economic Initiative Fund. I don't believe that is a good use of that money. I think we should, we, there's only certain buckets of money we can use certain things for. And every year, for five years, we've been constantly taking a little more out, taking something else out of it, taking it for this, and now we're taking a big chunk out of it, what's it left at, what's that, that right now?
I don't have it with me, do you, Mary Ann?
I think it was like. Mary Ann, you knew I was going there, didn't you? Um, I know it was over a hundred grand, I think it was close to.
Oh, it's, yeah, it's in the four hundred thousand dollar range, I think.
More than that.
And we don't do anything good with it, except when the businesses downtown need something, then we can move on, on giving them money out of it, um.
We could give you a history of how that's been spent over the last few years.
So it is a big bucket of money, um, that we should.
We recently got money back for the money that we loaned for the Ginkgo Tree.
Right, the land contract.
That was two hundred thousand dollars, just back in those two loans.
Okay, and that just got put, so where it was pushed up to about four hundred? Or, or are we still going up farther than that? Oh, that makes me feel so much better.
Kristen, you had your hand up?
Yeah, I was curious how transforming rental houses into regular houses makes the economy better? Isn't the initiative, isn't this supposed to like, you know, spur the economy in some way, I don't see how.
Taking a vacant rental house and turning it into a family home?
A vacant rental house?
Yeah, a vacant rental home.
Yeah, but a vacant, even a vacant rental home is paying taxes.
Sure.
Yeah, I, I'm just.
It's owned by a, by a homeowner or by a homeowner.
Sure. Would you rather have a vacant home in a neighborhood, or, or someone that was living in it?
Yeah, I, 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 I'd rather have someone living in it, but I, I've also, this is Economic Initiative Fund, and that says to me, bringing economy building into the city.
It's a handout, it's corporate welfare to the handout to business owners, to advertise them by taxpayer dollars, that's a handout, it's a subsidy.
For small businesses, not corporations, we're not giving it to Meyer or Walmart, we're giving it to local businesses to spur the economy.
There's something about rising tide of some, I don't know, but I, you know, like, I think we just need to be cautious with the, with, I certainly support.
Sure.
Kristen?
Yeah, I'm, I, that's part of the first one.
You got your four.
And again, you can't vote in work session, so we'll bring it for a formal.
Well, you got your four that, or.
I've got another question about what Laurie was mentioning, I don't know, I don't know if this is appropriate, are we at the other time, or are we still talking about this? Or is there another time, or there is something?
You could just go ahead.
Go ahead.
A colleague of mine is a, uh, a fairly highly regarded organizational psychologist. Um, and he, um, he just finished a project for the university, you know, he, so he's a graduate son now. And what they do every year is they take on a project, he just took, took on a project at the university about transfer students, if none of you are interested, I'm avoiding the details, but he did a pretty good job. He approached me and said, hey, um, is there something the city would want done? And what he has is citizen graduate students, and what they'll do is they take on a project, they've done stuff for Gray Lane, they've done stuff for, um, I don't know, you know, Midland, you know, they, they'll occasionally just, and what they do is they, so what I was talking to him about is what Laurie brought up. You know, the, the idea of, um, you know, is there some way to work, to get our heads around the fact that we have less students renting properties, and that we may have some more vacant properties available, or something about that. Well, anyway, I've just been very, you know, he's, uh, you know, he's, he's got some fairly good bona fides, he's a very high, highly productive researcher, very highly regarded, his discipline is all free, it's free labor, and, um, if there were a project that tees out something to it, or is actually maybe working with builders and the community and other people, to say, hey, what would work to sort of transform some of these, uh, facilities? It, it's not slow, I mean, it's slow, right, and it takes, so, I mean, it'd take like three months. You know, so they'd start in August or September, but anyway, his name's Steve Colabelly.
George, I think in city business, three months is not slow.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
I thought that was pretty fast.
Oh, okay. Anyway.
Nancy, one quick question, uh, what is the connection between the city and Ginkgo Tree?
Um, right now, there's no longer a connection, there was, um, Ginkgo Tree had a land contract with the, was it with the Tifa board, Mary Ann, or with the EDC?
Both, EDC.
With each of those entities, and that land contract ballooned at the end of twenty nineteen, and Ginkgo Tree paid off that balloon, so we no longer have loaned any money to them, they've paid off the loan that those two entities made, so there is no business relationship any longer.
But that was actually owned by the city, those two parcels?
One was owned by the EDC and one was owned by the Tifa, a number of years ago.
Ten years, land contract, yeah, yeah.
We know that.
Yeah, back in a very long, I don't remember what year that land contract was entered into.
And the Ginkgo Tree is a hotel.
It is.
The one.
The Ginkgo Tree has been stated or categorized as a hotel instead of a bed and breakfast, so the Chi-Chis or Cheez-ees, or whatever, the one right next door.
Oh, oh, the place across from the.
So they could have a bed and breakfast there, because we, our, our zoning ordinance doesn't allow, or not our zoning ordinance, but where you can't have a bed, two bed and breakfasts within so many.
Oh, I see what you're saying, I got it, yeah.
So many feet or something of each other, and so they categorized one as a hotel, so they could put them both next to each other.
But in, there is no business relationship any longer, Commissioner Tollis?
Okay, thank you. Okay, is there any other discussion on the, uh, Tifa? Seen none, um, majorism, you have everything you need?
I think we have everything we need for tonight.
We are adjourned at nine forty-one, thank you, everybody.